Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Travis Jenkins is here with Harvest Assembly of God. I'll ask him to step forward and lead us in the invocation. I'll also note that his church has adopted Van Buren Elementary School, which is located near their church in South Oklahoma City. We really appreciate all the work you're doing with the kids over there. Please pass along our compliments to the congregation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Meg Sawyer, she'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us to gather together. Lord, we pray your blessing over this day of business and leadership that will take place. We pray that you grant our leaders wisdom to make decisions that rightly govern the people that they're responsible for. Lord, we pray your blessing over each and every person that's here. Lord, we pray that you be with them, watch over them, protect them, and continue to bless this great state, this great city, and this great nation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Those that track our council meetings regularly know that every month we discuss an employee who has stood out amongst all the others and have an Employee of the Month. Well, today, we are going to be honoring, looking back at 2013, our Employees of the Year. And we have three that have been selected, one from police, one from fire, and one from the rest of our general employee base. We will start with our Police Officer of the Year. Let's show our appreciation to Sergeant Cameron Douglas. Sergeant? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Sergeant Cameron Douglas has been a city employee for 14 years and is an impact officer in the Spring Lake Division of the Operations Bureau of the Police Department. Sergeant Douglas investigates criminals, manages confidential informants, conducts undercover controlled narcotic purchases, executes search warrants, apprehends criminals, and handles other police-related duties in the Impact Unit. Sergeant Douglas this year has assisted in the apprehension of 191 individuals, the seizure of three pounds of cocaine, 1.3 pounds of meth, 113 pounds of marijuana, and 57 firearms. He executed 75 search warrants and seized over $187,000. Sergeant Douglas is the leader within the unit and consistently sets high standards for himself and his peers. It is his servant heart and compassion for others that really stand out. Sergeant Douglas quickly became involved when Major Brian Jennings and the Spring Lake Division adopted a young family for Christmas, as they had recently moved to Oklahoma City and due to a job loss was in dire need. Sergeant Douglas helped the family find suitable housing, got his fellow officers, friends, and family involved in donating money, personal items, a refrigerator, stove, clean clothes, and toys for the children. Sergeant Douglas's caring heart and commitment to help a family in need went above and beyond the call of duty. This council desires to recognize Sergeant Cameron Douglas for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Sergeant Cameron Douglas, 2013 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Police Officer of the Year.
Let's show our appreciation.
Mayor, we need a motion on the resolution.
We have to vote on this, Cam, so the suspense continues. I need a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. How about one more round of applause? And for the Firefighter of the Year, please show your appreciation to Sergeant Thomas Yancy. And I'll ask the rest of the group to come forward. You want to bring the rest of your crew up? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Sergeant Thomas Yancy has been a city employee for 19 years and is in Fire Dispatch of the Fire Department. Sergeant Yancy began his career as a firefighter EMT, transferred to Fire Dispatch in July 2010, and was promoted to Sergeant in August 2013. Sergeant Yancy performs a critical role relaying lifesaving radio reports to fire companies responding to emergencies, acting as the eyes and ears for the first responders, calming frantic callers and assuring them help is on the way. Sergeant Yancy developed a solution for the after-hours requests for service system for fire dispatchers to use to contact and track code enforcement officers because existing procedures were not functionally efficient. Sergeant Yancy created a rotation log indicating the last code enforcement officer who responded to an incident and using this as a starting point to begin phone calls for the next incident. Sergeant Yancy enhanced the response report to enable dispatchers to track responses to phone calls in greater detail and produced easily understood step-by-step instructions on how to use the system. Sergeant Yancy's improvements to the system ensured after-hours calls were evenly distributed among code enforcement officers and their responses to requests for services were adequately tracked. Sergeant Yancy went above and beyond what is expected and by using his creativity and organizational skills, improved the efficiency of the dispatch office and the Fire Department's response to citizens of this community. This council desires to recognize Sergeant Thomas Yancy for his commitment, dedication to his profession, and the safety in the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Sergeant Thomas Yancy, 2013 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Firefighter of the Year.
And a motion and a second. All right, cast your votes. And again, it is unanimous. While our three firefighters are up here, though, let's use this opportunity to talk a little bit about the conditions that are currently existing in our city. As it was explained to me this morning when we were kind of discussing and taking some pictures, that because of all the rain that we had throughout much of 2013, a lot of vegetation grew, and now because of the dry conditions, that's just fuel for any fire that might exist. And of course, the air is extremely dry, and I don't have to tell anybody that, that if we wake up this morning, you can kind of feel it on your skin. These are ripe conditions, and so I want people to be extra diligent about anything that might cause a fire and create more havoc for these three gentlemen. So let's show our appreciation to our Firefighter of the Year. Thank you very much for all the work you did. About 10 years ago, we started a program called The Ambassadors, and it generally is an opportunity for volunteers to work with our police department but to serve as ambassadors for the City of Oklahoma City with people, specifically visitors, who might be downtown and need help in a variety of ways. And I want to acknowledge that Robert Castor is our Employee of the Year. One of Robert. He's been a city employee now for 10 years. He's 89 years old and retired over 30 years ago. We're thinking in another 30, you can retire again, Robert. In 30 more, you can retire. Right now, though, we have a resolution, as you are our City Employee of the Year, and I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Robert L. Castor, Jr. has been a city employee for 10 years and nine months and is an administrative coordinator in the Uniform Support Division, Operations Bureau of the Police Department. Robert Castor has coordinated the Oklahoma City Ambassadors Community Assistance Program since 2003 in assist with the recruitment, selection, training, and scheduling of the city's 31 ambassadors who serve in the downtown and Bricktown area. Robert Castor works with the ambassadors to ensure they can answer questions, provide information, and are familiar with places of interest and the geography of the areas. Robert Castor provides the ambassadors with daily updates stressing the importance of being helpful, responsive, and alert as another set of eyes and ears for police officers. Robert Castor maintains records and prepares reports showing the number and types of contacts the ambassadors make, the number of events they work, and how they help citizens, visitors, and police officers. Robert Castor has made important contributions to the ambassadors program's success in helping to make the downtown and Bricktown area safe for our citizens and visitors. This council desires to recognize Robert L. Castor, Jr. for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Robert L. Castor, Jr., 2013 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Year.
Thank you so much. How about a motion and a second? And it passes unanimously. Robert, please pass along our compliments to the rest of the citizens who volunteer their time to help make Oklahoma City a more welcoming place. And we also kind of want to use this as an opportunity, I think, to expose the fact that crime prevention starts at the neighborhood level, it starts at the volunteer level, it starts with being a block captain, but the ambassadors are certainly part of that overall effort to aid our police officers in trying to make Oklahoma City a safer place. And you guys are very much on the front line, so thank you very much for that. Those are three great examples of the employees of Oklahoma City. We are on the council agenda at Item 4, and this is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 14th, and Item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 7th and 8th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And Item 5 is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, on Page 5, Item 8D1, Page 5, Item A, 1304 North Wisconsin. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And Item E, 1819 Northwest 42nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. There's a new owner. And then moving on to Item 8E1 on Page 6, Item A, 4400 South Walker, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item B, 1442 Southwest 13th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item C, 1109 Northeast 14th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item D, 1509 Northwest 14th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. I guess the letters work.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll assess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And same thing on the PPA, just the claims and payroll. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And finally, the EAT has the claims and payroll only. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. I will adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Nothing on the concurrent docket today, so we're on to Item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. Item 8A is a zoning case in Ward 5. The address is 16300 South Pennsylvania Avenue. It's currently a double-A agricultural district, and it would become a new planned unit development. We have one person, David, that has signed up to speak.
Your Honor, I've spoken with the attorneys representing both the developer as well as the protesters in the areas, and I am going to request that we remand this or send it back down to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So if the person who would like, who has signed up to speak, they're still able to, but...
Well, in fact, the person made a note there, they'd like to speak if it's not sent to the planning.
Oh, okay.
Apparently, they're okay with your decision.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we remand this or send it back to the Planning Commission at this time.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here hoping to speak to this item before we send it back to planning? All right, cast your votes, and that item is sent back to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Item 8B is an issue that's been recommended for denial. It's in Ward 1, and it was, the idea was to close a 10-foot drainage easement. I think that's going to be troublesome for us. James, do you have any thoughts on this?
Is the applicant here?
Is anyone here hoping to speak on Item 8B?
Well, I watched the Planning Commission, and yet they, you know, it's closing a drainage easement, and they didn't allocate anything to replace it, and so it'll, will impact the surrounding, surrounding homes drainage-wise. So that's why the Planning Commission denied it, and so that's why I'll move to deny it.
Okay. There's a motion to deny. Okay, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8C is a public hearing, and this has to do with the fees for the wet stalls out at Lake Stanley Draper. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on Item 8C today? All right. And we went over this issue in our, in our last meeting, so I think we're good to go on it. All right, how about a motion to move this forward? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. We have one person that has signed up to speak. Joe Sarge Nelson? Well, Sarge has apparently left already. Okay. Is, is there a motion?
Second.
Second. Okay, we're voting on Item 8D. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And Item 8E is unsecured structures. Is there anyone that's signed up to speak here?
All those are stricken.
Okay, they've all been stricken. Okay. Do we need a motion to move it forward, or is it just good to go?
Yes, they're all taken.
All right. All right, we're on to Item 8F then, and this is a resolution receiving the Oklahoma City Parks Master Plan. And Andrew Dobczynski and Peter Hornick are here to discuss this. And here they come. Andrew is from the Community Foundation, and Peter's from the Trust for Public Lands.
Thank you very much. I'm actually from the consulting firm WRT, and I was very happy to work on the Parks Master Plan with the Trust for Public Land and the PROS and ETC Institute, which did some community surveys for us. And we were very happy to work with the City of Oklahoma City and the Community Foundation on this plan. And so I just wanted to, let's see, I'm not sure if this is working. Oh, there we go. So I'm just going to quickly walk through what some of the contents of the plan was that we developed. And so down the left side of the screen is the contents of the plan, the table of contents. And here is the cover of the plan that shows beautiful Marriott Gardens. So I quickly, going back to laying the foundation of the plan, we just wanted to briefly mention that Oklahoma City has a history of thinking about its park system and planning for its park system, going back to the 1910 Dunn Plan, which imagined the four large public parks at the corners of the city with a grand boulevard loop that connected them. And if we look at what the city looked like in 1910 and compare it to the Dunn Plan, the Dunn Plan actually envisioned a park system that went beyond the borders of the, or beyond the development of the existing city. And if we look at the growth of the city since then, in 2010, you see that obviously the city is a lot larger in terms of land area and population. And so now it's time to think about what is the next vision for the park system for the city. And so the mission of the plan is to think about promoting great parks in Oklahoma City. The goals of the plan were taken from the Plan OKC process, specifically the Play OKC element, which addresses parks. And there were five goals, which is to think about how parks contribute to a healthy lifestyle, think about how the park system can be accessible by multiple modes of transportation, having facilities in parks that match the needs of the community, making sure that the park system is funded and operated in a, in a safe and sustainable way, and making sure that public and private parks are designed to achieve safety, accessibility, and attractiveness. Part of the process was also comparing the Oklahoma City park system to other cities, other similar cities in the Midwest, and TPL helped with this analysis. And as you can see, Oklahoma City does pretty well. The ones are where the city ranks the highest in that category. So Oklahoma City is leading the way in skate parks, but obviously, there are things that you could improve upon by looking at what other peers are doing. Specifically, Kansas City among your peers seems to be doing very well across categories in terms of providing amenities and also in terms of the spending that they do on their park system. Also, part of the process was doing a community survey to find out what people want and need in terms of their park system. And some of the, I'm just going to share some of the results with you, some highlights. Not surprisingly, 90% of households drive to parks, but a good 38% of them also walk to parks. And if you look at why, why people may not be walking, you see that over half of people feel that there are not enough parks within walking distance of their home. Also interesting is that only 11% of participants, respondents participated in a program in the past year, which is a lot lower than, than national benchmarks. And if you ask them why they haven't participated, more than a third say that they haven't participated because they don't know what's being offered. Also interesting is that 85% of respondents identified that parks contribute to a healthy and active lifestyle, which is actually much higher than the national average. So people understand that there's a connection between parks and healthier living. Also, we asked about funding for parks, and it was interesting to see that people are, in order to fund the parks and trails and recreation facilities that are most important to them, people seem to be willing. More than two-thirds said they would be willing to, they would support increased taxes or increased fees for parks. The other thing that we asked were, what are the priority parks and facilities? What are the priority programs? What are the priority actions that you think the city could take in order to improve the park system? And not surprisingly, the number-one parks and facilities category was trails, which we actually see nationally comes up very often as a high priority. And it's important because it makes a more connected park system. But also, we see small neighborhood parks, large parks. And if we look at programs, you know, on the list also is trails and walking and biking groups, also adult fitness and wellness, which is at the top of the list. And if we look at actions, number one is upgrading neighborhood parks, and number two, again, is building walking biking trails and then upgrading community parks. So taking all of this input, the community survey, looking at benchmarks, we conducted a number of stakeholder interviews. We developed six strategic directions, and the stakeholders actually prioritized the strategic directions. And so at the top of the list was maintaining and improving existing parks. Number two was developing facilities and programs in existing parks to meet community needs. Number three was improving access to existing parks. Number four, promoting awareness of the value of parks. And number five, developing new parks and facilities. And then lastly, establishing agreements and standards for private parks and school parks. And so then, just on that last part, this Parks Master Plan doesn't just include public parks. It also took a look at all of the private parks in the city, since it's all part of one park system. And so there are a number of park classifications, a number of different types of parks, that actually came from the previous Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And there really were no changes that we saw that were needed to that classification system, but we did categorize them into parks that serve more local needs, parks that serve more regional needs, and then other parks that are more specialized. And again, this includes public and private parks. So one of the additions that was not in the previous plan is to look at school parks under local parks. And so in the master plan, each of the park classifications has standards that are based on best practices for size, the length of visit, the access, and the list of appropriate amenities for that type of park. And so thinking about why it's important to plan for the park system, you know, going back to one of those first slides where I showed the growth of the city, this map shows the existing population distribution across Oklahoma City, where the darkest areas are the most dense, the most populated. But if we look at where the growth is going, you'll see that the growth in the dark blue is actually in the outer fringes of the city, and some of the more traditionally developed areas in the center core of the city are actually projected to decrease some in population. So thinking about how to provide facilities in growing areas and how to make the best use of existing facilities in developed areas is part of the master plan. And so what we did is, in concert with the level of service tiers that are being developed for Plan OKC, we looked at developing four different tiers of park service so that we could take advantage of the facilities that already exist and think about how we're going to plan for facilities that may not exist. And so there are four level of service tiers, one being the central city, the second being the urban area, then looking at the urban growth area, and then the area that's outside of that area, which is the rural area. And so for each of the different types of parks, local parks, regional parks, and trails, we developed a level of service standard in each of those level of service tiers so that there is a clear commitment from the city as to what level of service can be expected in which parts of the city, and so that developers and residents can also understand what to expect from the city. And so taking a look at what these standards actually look like applied to the city, the pink areas on the map represent the areas that are most heavily populated in the city. And if we look at applying the level of service standard for local parks, all of the blue areas meet the, meet the standard, which means that you're within a certain walking distance of a park. If we look at how to expand access without creating any new parks by creating new sidewalks, creating new access points to existing parks, you could actually increase the area of the city that's served without having to build any additional parks. And then if we think about how to integrate school parks and make them more a formal part of the park system, even more of the city is, meets that standard. And then the circles in pink are some areas that may not meet the standard, which potentially could be considered as areas for, for new parks in the future. But the really, the key takeaway here is that without having to build new parks and by increasing access to existing parks, by building new sidewalks or increasing access points into existing parks... existing parks, you could actually more than double the number of people who have good walking access to parks. We did the same thing for regional parks, and again, the pink are the most populated areas of the city. The light shaded pink are actually areas of the city that are projected to grow in the next 30 years. And in terms of regional park access, almost all the city meets the standard for regional park access. There are some small parts. But again, adding sidewalks and access points to regional parks can increase the area of the city that is served. And again, the circles represent areas that potentially could be considered for new regional parks in the future. And again, regional parks don't have as drastic an increase, but without building any new regional parks, it is, again, possible to increase the number of people who are served by the existing regional parks by increasing sidewalks and access points that create better access to those parks. And then finally, for trails, the same thing, the pink being the areas that are populated, the light pink being the areas that are projected to grow. The areas in blue, again, are well-served by existing parks. And then if we include planned parks and, again, increasing access to existing trails, sorry, planned trails, not planned parks, and increasing access to existing trails, the areas in purple would also have good access by these standards. And then the lines in pink show potential future trail connections that might be considered to create a more connected system. So again, by increasing sidewalks and access points to existing trails, by building out the planned trail network, there can be an increase in the number of people who have access to trails. And so all of this was kind of wrapped up into a set of recommendations that were put into an action plan. And so for each of the strategic directions, there are a number of actions that are listed that can move the park system in the direction of that action. There's a rationale for the action, which draws on best practices. It also draws on the results that we heard from the community survey. So the reason that we're suggesting this action is to, is because of the things that we heard in the community survey and because of best practices. And then specific action steps that the city and its partners can take to implement those actions. There's also an action table, which takes this a few steps further. It talks about the type of method that's needed to implement the action, whether it's a policy or a task, which parties in the city are responsible. So this example, there are all the Parks and Recreation Department. Potential partners, we realize the city is not going to do everything on its own, and so we've listed potential partners that include public, private, and nonprofit entities, potential sources of funding, performance measures that can be used to gauge the success and progress of implementing the plan, and then a timeframe, whether it's short, medium, or long term. The plan also goes into more detail about funding options and strategies. There's an Oklahoma City by the Numbers, which compares Oklahoma City to other Midwestern cities. There's a list of different funding sources in the categories of acquisition, maintenance, and then operations. And then there are recommendations about how to help the Parks and Recreation System become more financially self-sufficient. So there were three funding scenarios that are talked about in the plan. One is what happens if funding continues at existing levels, the second being what happens if there's a small incremental increase every year, and then scenario C, what level of investment would be required, including for all of the proposed recommendations in the plan. In terms of maintenance, the Parks and Recreation Department actually has very good maintenance standards and procedures in place, and those requirements should continue and be, they should continue and be applied to private and nonprofit organizations that work with public and private parks. But due to funding, parks are maintained to a lower level in Oklahoma City than other Midwest cities. And then finally, as I touched on a little bit earlier, partnerships are key to implementing the Parks Master Plan, and there are a number of recommendations in the plan that talk about what to do with partnerships, including cataloging existing friends organizations and establishing an umbrella friends entity in the city, which could help be a partner to the city in taking care of its park system, ensuring that other service providers meet city standards, looking for partnerships with the private sector, looking at the possibility of creating a conservancy for the four original Dunn parks, like the conservancy that exists for myriad gardens. Again, looking at public partnerships, going back to the survey results, people realize that parks are an important part in health, and so looking at partnerships between parks and perhaps the city-county health department. And in terms of trails, looking at partnerships with the Public Works Department. There is an existing Shell Parks Foundation, Oklahoma City Parks Foundation, and one of the recommendations of this plan is that should be activated. And then working with advocacy groups to promote the value of the park system and kind of raise the tide for the park system in the city. And that was a very quick overview, but I hope that gives you kind of a flavor of what's in the Parks Master Plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Nancy, would you come up and speak on how the community foundation's role in all of this?
Just briefly, give kudos to Pete and to Pat, working with them. We had done some work on parks. We've been involved with parks for a long, long time, and not only in terms of the landscaping and planting trees, but also in terms of some of the programming activities that had gone in, playing the park programs and other things. As we began to think about the future of parks, you know, parks are important in this city, and they have incredible potential. And I was going to say, the weather is generally very nice for parks, except today, it's not very nice for parks, so it kind of stepped on my line. But in any event, most of the time, you can do lots of things outside Oklahoma City, so it's a real opportunity. We have a lot of space, and so it's something that we really need to take advantage of and can, and I think a lot of it is just a matter of trying to get a little bit better organized about it. One of the things that came out of a study that we did with OCU back in 2011 was that we really need to develop some private partnerships. In order to do that, people have to know what's going to happen. So the whole idea of a plan was really to sort of lay out for the, for potential private partners or other sources besides just tax dollars, how would that be, how would that work, both in terms of a small neighborhood park or maybe even a larger area? So I think having a plan and knowing where you're going is really necessary for groups like us to be able to try to garner other people to support them. We think that they're important. We think they're vital to the entire community, everything about the community, the health, the economic development, and even social fabric, the opportunities that people have to play in the park and do positive things is really great. So we thank you for helping us do this. We cooperate with us, and we look forward to making it work, doing some things that are there, so.
And that's in the weeks and months to come?
Yes, sir. Today at lunch.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge Leslie Hudson and Brian Doherty for their work on this project as well.
Mayor, Wendell Wilson had wanted to make a couple of comments. I did want to acknowledge the importance of such a study as you have before you today. It's always good to have outside groups look at your operation, see how it can be improved. We are very pleased that both the city council and the community foundation and others in the community, many others, recognize how important parks are to the city of Oklahoma City. We don't refer to this very often to you, but I will say today that one of the things that we recognize in Parks and Recreation that is not often recognized is the importance of play. Play is very redeeming for us all, regardless of our age, but it's especially redeeming for children, who only are children one time, as we were. So we're very pleased to see the community foundation, Ms. Hudson, Mr. Doherty, and Ms. Anthony recognizing the importance of parks. They've been a good partner for a number of years and obviously are going to continue to be. Thank you very much for continuing to give high priority to parks in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendell. Comments or questions from council? Yeah, David, then Meg.
Could we go back to the part of the report as it relates to the expectations from the public? It's kind of in the first third of the report. Could we pull that screen up? And while we're pulling it up, my question is, in regards to what people are looking for from a park, at least to me, it seems like our new Central Park or Quarter Shore Park meets a lot of those expectations.
Absolutely.
And could we talk just for a second about that? Maybe it's the next slide, that one. For example, you know, number one is walking and biking trails, and I think our new park certainly has a lot of that built into it. Adult wellness and fitness programs. Now, the city may not be in a position to provide those programs, but can private groups come in and, say, an individual leads some kind of an exercise program on city property like that?
Yes.
Okay. So anyway, sometimes when I hear criticism about our new park, you know, often it's not with specific reasons why. So could you just go through that in reference to the new Central Park?
Sure. I first actually want to mention that in examining how the existing park system fits the standards, we actually did include the Central Park in that analysis with the understanding that it would probably eventually be built, and we wanted to make sure that we were including that in looking at the analysis. I think that the Central Park is a great example of how there could be partnerships between the public and private sector, and also looking at how it integrates into the trail system, because it's right there, connected to the trail system, thinking about good walking access to parks with the boulevard connections and that it would be within walking distance of new neighborhoods and the existing downtown. I think, you know, that I agree that the Central Park really does fit a lot of the things that we're talking about in this plan.
Thank you.
Meg?
I wanted to go back to the slide that talked about funding, particularly best practices in the different communities. And I know there are a lot of variables here, but the one that jumped out at me was Kansas City and its funding. Can you share with us a little bit how they fund their parks?
Actually, did you? I don't have total details on the full range of funding for Kansas City. More money is coming from the city government in terms of taxpayer-supported funding. They have, Kansas City portrays itself as a city of fountains, so their fountains are very important as part of their park system, and they have a conservancy that works with, or several conservancies that work with many of the fountains, and that's kind of a joint effort. Their, one of their most prominent parks, I think, has a specific conservancy that was set up by a wealthy family to fund that park. So it is a mixture of more commitment of the city government towards its park system, the historical parkway system throughout the city, and probably a longer history of private support of their park systems together. One thing that I would recommend, if at all possible, that maybe a subcommittee of your council, maybe in conjunction with the community foundation, to take a field trip to Kansas City and actually look at their parks and talk to their park director. They also had a park plan dating back to the 1890s. They were able to stick to their plan a little bit longer and better than Oklahoma City has been able to, and that has provided some bones for really maintaining their park system that maybe we could do here as well.
I also wanted to ask about funding, and, I mean, just in regards to Kansas City, on page 78, it talks about a boulevard tax, that those who live along the parkways and boulevards are assessed per linear foot, and then that's added to their property tax. There's a lot of different options that are outlined in here, and I'm not sure that they all are applicable to Oklahoma City and Oklahoma because of some of our state laws. And so what I take from the report on page 76, looking at Oklahoma City by the numbers, is that we just, the amount that we fund compared to other Midwestern cities is very, very low. You're saying that most Midwestern cities would spend about $65 to $70 per capita on their park budget, and we spend about $40. You're saying that we spend $1,400 an acre on maintenance, and that's very, very low compared to other Midwestern cities. You're saying that most cities, most Midwestern cities would spend about $20 per capita on recreational opportunities, and we spend about $8. So what I'm taking from the report is that our financial commitment to the park system is very, very low compared to other Midwestern cities. And I'm not sure how you, I mean, that seems to be the most important issue. I'm not sure you outlined that our overall budget was about $24 million. I'm not sure that you're including, I don't see any reference to our Central Park and what happens when we bring a $130 million park online with an unfunded $3 million about maintenance bill. You talk about private partnerships. I know that Pete and I weren't here a couple weeks ago when we talked about the Central Park Master Plan, but I'm not seeing those, we've had four years, I'm not seeing those private partners coming forward. And so I'm wondering what happens to these numbers throughout our neighborhoods as we bring this unfunded liability online, and what, so can you talk about that, bringing the Central Park online, what that does? Can you talk about where we are compared to our peers? And then specifically of these, you list multiple different options as funding sources for maintenance, but there's no rank ordering of them. I mean, I'm not sure what, this is pages of different things that are done in different cities. I'm not sure which ones you believe would be most applicable to Oklahoma City, which would be our first, second, third, fourth priority to look at? Can you help me organize this?
Well, I think that that was actually intentional. The way that it's set up is really a menu of funding options, because I think that there isn't a single or two or three options that really are the options to pursue. I think that across all of the options that are laid out, you know, things, certain options may present themselves because of certain opportunities at certain points. You know, certain players become involved, and then certain options become more feasible than they might be right now. So I don't think that there is a specific priority to the funding options that are in there. I think they are meant to be a menu to choose from. In terms of the Central Park, I agree that it is an issue to think about what that's going to do in terms of funding for the overall park system, but I, you know, I do think that it's not too late to have conservancy set up or a foundation set up that could help in terms of that partnership for funding that park. You know, as we said before, I think that there are a lot of benefits, obviously, to that park, and, you know, I think that it's still in a stage where it's possible to set up those partnerships for funding.
I think you're asking really excellent questions. The main handicap that I feel that we were working under for a park plan like this is that parks can't be considered in a vacuum in relation to all the other things that are going on in the city. You know, in a way, the Central Park is the beginning of a conversation about whether the city is going to focus a little bit more on its center or is going to keep spreading further and further out. The fact that Oklahoma City is such a gigantic area puts a tremendous burden, an overwhelming burden, on the Parks Department, because, first of all, there's this continuing pressure to keep building parks further and further out as people move further and further out. And then, secondly, that is essentially stealing or reorienting resources from the center of of the city to the, to the further, further. Of course, there's reasons to have a city that's very large. You capture all of your tax base from where other cities might have suburbs that have their own tax base. You capture that. But the flip side of that is you have these tremendous expenses, and Wendell and his crew have to drive gigantic distances to maintain all these parks and things like that. So there's a double whammy going on here, that there's a relatively low level of expenditure, public expenditure, and the fact that you're serving such a gigantic area, one of the largest cities in the country. So in a sense, we're at, I think, I think we're at a moment in time where the city is trying to decide whether the Central Park is going to help become a catalyst for centriferation, a certain amount of centrifification. And if that's successful, that's going to stimulate the kind of development around its edges and nearby, hopefully within walking distance or bicycling distance or transit distance, that it will develop the kind of growth around the edges that will actually generate funds that will help keep that park up, as well as other aspects of the city.
Is Aubrey still, is, can I ask you a question? So what do we do with all this information in terms of the comprehensive plan? I mean, how can we, how does this get incorporated in the comprehensive plan, and we try and come up with a cost for what he's outlining as these different growth strategies? And then, I mean, some of these funding options don't appear to me to be legal in the state of Oklahoma potentially. And so are we going to be presented with something that talks about what is and isn't feasible, and then maybe prioritizes them in terms of strategies?
Yes, that's, that's exactly what we would do. We worked very closely with them in trying to get the information that we would need so that we can project what our priorities would be in this community and where those areas of growth and pressure and conflict between where do we spend that funding, where do we prioritize those resources, would go. So now that we understand where growth is going to be, trying to project a park service standard that we would strive to meet, plus we know that we have, we're building upon this central core and trying to amenitize all the things people can do in our downtown and near downtown areas, we're going to be laying that out in the comprehensive plan. And through all the balance of all of these things, as Peter mentioned, we've got a park system we have to balance, we have a transportation network, we have neighborhoods that we need to support. With all of these things that are competing for our resources, we need to lay that out in the plan and let the community say where those priorities should be allocated. So the plan will have a structure and recommendations and strategies to try to subsidize that in ways possible through, might take a legislative change if we seek a certain funding source for our park system that we currently can't do in our city. So the plan is really just going to be a similar document to this, in that it lays out options, strategies, priorities, and then it's implemented through actions that the community and the council take through the implementation of the plan.
Okay. Thank you. Pete?
One of the things that I've observed over the three years we've been involved, almost three years now we've been involved in doing this, is that it does point out without question how underfunded we are compared to other cities, I think, but most of us knew that. I mean, that's not something we didn't know ahead of time, but that does, that's certainly pointed out very well in this. The thing the glass men have full is that when the citizens were surveyed, they were enthusiastic about the idea of more parks, of paying more money for more parks, taxes. And some of the things that we're trying to do fit right in with what the citizens want. So I think we need to focus on the future, and I, Pat and I met with the people, with Wendell and some, and people within finance and so forth, talking about what the future holds, and, and I think one of the things we may see in the next budget session is an effort on the part of parks to reclaim some of that loss that they've had. One of the things I've suggested is that they look at it the way that Rick Kane has done transit. He would always meet Jim's standard that he'd set up for his department heads, what he wanted the budget to look like, but he also gave us some options. There were options that said, if you do this, I think this will work. And as we look back on what happened in transit, at a time when things were shrinking, transit's got better. And I think parks could do the same thing. And Wendell and I have had a conversation about that, maybe as a technique this year when we bring budget things, to try to find something to put in, to, as an add-on, say, if you give me this much money, I think I might be able to do this. I can experiment, like we did with increasing the frequency on the bus routes that proved to be phenomenally successful. And I think this is a blueprint to get us started moving in that direction, and it's been, it's been, I've really enjoyed the three years that I've been, and Pat and I both have been involved in it for that length of time. I've really enjoyed that, because it showed me things about the park system that I suspected but wasn't sure was true, the new ideas that I didn't know about. I think it's a great plan, and I, and I think it's got, it's got the meat in it to let us move forward to do some really good things with parks.
Wendell, do you want to say something?
Yes, sir, if I may. Of course, we're preparing budgets now, and we're absolutely looking at the master plan to see what is recommended to be implemented early, and there are a number of things that are recommended to be implemented early. You heard Mr. De Potencio say to us that a number of people stated that they're not aware of the services that we offer. That's not good. We are very concerned about that. We are looking at how we can better market and what the needs would be to allow us to do that. Another concern that's recognized in the plan is the condition of the urban leaf canopy and whether we're taking good care of that, whether we, whether we're replenishing it, and whether we know the condition that it's in. We're also looking at how we could fund a program that would allow us to have that knowledge and the work that comes from that knowledge. So we are looking at the plan as to how we can implement portions of it early. So it's a good tool to use for that. It's a challenging plan, as it should be.
Wendell, thanks. Now, David?
Just quickly, there's a biography about Robert Moses, who headed up the New York City Parks Department, that would give those who are not too familiar with the development of the park system in New York City, a great perspective on how to, you know, build this up. And I know City Manager Couch is familiar with the book, and we're trying to implement a lot of those methodologies in all aspects. So anyway, I'm just kidding about that part.
Not sure we want to implement all of that. It was an interesting history of New York politics.
Yeah, but still, you saw the efforts and the commitment to the park system that he had, and it paid off. I mean, no question, his influence and direction really made their park system what it is today.
Meg?
Just a quick comment. I think it's important to note that we have used one of the most identifiable sources of funding here with a dedicated sales tax. We went to the citizens and talked about parks, and, you know, we've got a penny sales tax dedicated to building the Central Park. So we have begun to incorporate some of the ideas about how we might fund the future.
Right. Yeah, Pat?
I mean, Rick commented, this is kind of, it needs to be huge, not just a government or a public, and it needs to be a major part of the wonderful budget and objectives, to recognize and, 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 it's really valuable. We've kind of mentioned, we've saved a lot of money, it's, we've, we've got a lot of stress here to find out, somebody says, or, and if there are emergency processes, there are, we need to make sure this is documented, it needs to be, it needs to be used well, as Wendell, as well.
All right. How about a motion to receive the master plan? Any comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Again, thank you all. Item 8G, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Item 8H, I understand we do need executive session. Oh, okay. Back up, item 8G, we have a motion to strike. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now, item 8H, it looks like we do need executive session on this item. Cast your votes. Then item moves to executive session. Item 8I is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8I? Okay, is there a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 9, the claim recommended for approval? All right, how about a motion? And a second. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council, and we will start with an ordinance that's being introduced today, I guess publicly for the first time, and Councilwoman Salyer, I know you were instrumental in getting, getting this started. You want to explain what you have in mind?
Thank you, and I've got some colleagues that I'm sure would like to speak to this as well. But obviously, I think everybody would expect that during the discourse we've had over the last number of months on chickens, I've heard from a lot of people. I think I have a file as thick as Pete's that he brought to the council meeting, and mine was a little more evenly split, 50/50 or so. But we heard from a lot of folks and understand that this is an important issue to a number of our citizens. I see Sarah Britton in the back and a couple of her colleagues, and Sarah's worked doggedly for the last two and a half years or more, trying to move this issue forward. And we had a chance to meet before the December 31st vote, and I made it clear, I think, at the time, that I felt it was important to have the vote on a citywide ordinance change and see what the results of that were. But I did pledge at the time that if the vote was not, if the ordinance change was not approved, that I would try to work with them to figure out a process that in my mind probably involves some kind of a permit. My opinion about having backyard chickens in Oklahoma City has really not changed in the sense that I believe, and burden may not be the right word, but I'm going to use it anyway, I believe that the burden of going through the process to have the chickens ought to be placed on the person that wants them, not the person that doesn't. I continue to believe that we have a lot of urban dwellers that have chosen an urban lifestyle because they want urban, not rural. And so I think that the item that we're bringing forward today, in a large part, addresses many of the issues. It's probably not perfect, but our planning staff was fabulous in identifying an existing process. We have special exception uses for other things, and so the concept here is to use the special exception use for raising chickens. I think the critical issues to me were it was able to incorporate all of the items that were brought forward in the proposed ordinance change in terms of restrictions, maximum six, no roosters, coop setbacks, you have to have the right space in the backyard, all of those qualifiers or conditions will be brought forward in this permit process. The other thing that I think is very important is that if someone makes an application and is approved for this special exception, should they not use it for 12 months, or should the property change hands and it not be used for 12 months? It would vacate. So this is not an ordinance change that would run with the property. It is a special exception, and it has to be used. The third thing that I, you know, to me is the core for my helping to move this forward is that the process would be that a citizen that wants chickens would come make an application. We've, we're discussing, and this is certainly subject to discussion here today, but the recommendation that I brought forward was a $25 permit fee. This then would go, as any other zoning exception would, neighbors within a 300-foot radius would be notified, and that provides the vehicle for those neighbors to have input. They could either appear in person or in writing to the Board of Adjustment, and the application would be approved or denied. And so for me, this meets a lot of the criteria that we're lacking in the citywide ordinance change, and I want to compliment the staff over and over for being willing to work with us and try to come up with a solution that I think addresses most everybody's needs and concerns. Thank you, Mary.
Uh-huh, thanks. Do you want to comment?
Can I ask a, look, the co-sponsors, huh? A technical question, if, if, my understanding is normally when somebody brings something before the Board of Adjustment, they're responsible for coming up with the list of homes within 300 feet. Is that?
That's correct. That'd be part of the application process.
So the, so the person applying, it would be their responsibility to purchase or come up with a list of names within 300 feet?
That's correct, and if you provide the county with your legal description, they produce that list, and I think it's a dollar a page. It's a, it's a pretty small.
So how would they do that? They would?
They would take it to the assessor's office at the county, their legal description of their property, and then the county puts together the list, and then they pay, I think it's a dollar a page. So it's a pretty easy process.
And then who pays for the postage to send it out to everybody within 300?
That would be the staff. The Board of Adjustment staff would send the notes, just like we do on other cases. So their real cost is the application fee and then that, providing that ownership list. And they could do, they could hire, you know, someone to do it for them, but they can get that. It is available to them at the county.
I mean, if they have protesters, are they going to have to hire attorneys or?
That's really up to the applicant. At the Board of Adjustment, it's similar to the Planning Commission and Council. They'll hear both sides, and they'll make a determination based on that. They don't have to have an attorney. It's up to them.
Pete?
Well, as most of you probably know, this is more restricted than I would have liked, but I will say this, that after we had a vote, and being the expert mathematician that I claimed to be, I realized that there's no way it was going to be the way that I wanted it to be. I appreciate the fact that Meg moved forward on this, and, and this is an opportunity to bring chickens into the urban environment. I would disagree that the choices between living urban or living rural, I mean, chickens have become part of the urban landscape in a much larger, but that's just partial words there, and I don't want to get into that, because I do appreciate the fact that this has come forward. I think this is an opportunity. It may have some bugs, there may be some problems with it, but I'm, I'm hopeful that five of us will say that we ought to move this forward today. And I very much appreciate the positive view of the public outpouring that was here the other day and trying to find a way to compromise and move forward. So I, if Meg has moved it forward, I would second that motion.
Okay. I think Pat wanted to speak on the item.
The, obviously, in a republic, there are democracy that we have right now. In a democracy like we have right now, the majority rules. But associated with that, authority is a responsibility to make sure the rights of the minority are respected as well. And I think that although the process may appear cumbersome, it's necessary to ensure that the minorities who may not be in favor of chickens are protected, and I think that's an important part of this approach we're taking today.
Yeah, David?
Your Honor, I think there still are some questions, just as Councilman White mentioned, there may be some bugs to work out. I would like to at least consider adopt moving this ordinance forward, but just within the wards of the sponsors, 2, 4, and 6, for say, six months, and then it can, you know, if we don't have the questions or problems that may develop, then we could look at expanding it citywide.
Is that just a comment, or?
Well, it's my preference. I don't know if anyone will take that any further.
You actually have to do it based upon some sort of land use rationale. You can't just pick the wards. Like you could say, it can only be done in certain zoning districts. You could limit it to certain zoning districts where they could make this application. It doesn't have to be all zoning districts, but you can't just pick out the ward.
Yeah. Larry?
Yeah, I think there are a couple of things that have not been addressed in this, that rather than move this thing forward, I think there's some unintended consequences. I'm going to play on one of the words that Meg used, burden. The, from what I understand of the way the process as it's currently conceived would work, the cost of doing this would exceed by quite a bit the amount of the permit fee. And I find that that's putting a burden on the rest of us, who are quite content with the way it is right now. There needs to be some, some, I think, in order to protect the rights There needs to be some, I think, in order to protect the rights of that minority, as Pat was talking about, the fees should be addressed to cover the expenses of this particular process that's being suggested. The other concern that I have is another word beginning with a letter B, balance. The decision is going to be placed, on the way it's right now, on the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment is a judicial, quasi-judicial body that, the way I understand it, Kenny, as a councilman, I have to keep my hands off of talking to any Board of Adjustment member about an issue coming up. I can't give a preference and say, hey, I think you ought to go this way or that way.
That's correct.
And I have a concern of the balance that's going to be used in determining whether or not a special permit should be issued or not. The rights of the person that Pat's talking about who wants the chickens needs to be involved and the rights of the individuals, the citizens who do not want chickens in their neighborhood has to. And I have a real concern in thinking through this at this point, and I don't have a piece about it, of how that balance is going to be found on a case-by-case basis. And I do think if there was some way that this could be implemented on a test case, Ward three continues to be with one exception, there is one neighborhood in Ward three which has some unique geographic characteristics that some of the other neighbors do not have, would be an ideal neighborhood to allow this type of a thing to start. And how you would do that on a test case, I don't know. But rather than implement this citywide, I think we're going to accentuate the potential for unintended consequences. So I'd be in favor of some type of a pilot program going through where we can address some of these issues and come up with a more reasonable decision on it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Currently, we have a motion and a second to move it forward. Ed?
Well, I just...
Let me, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Moving it forward means sending it to the Planning Commission. It doesn't mean that we're taking it like it is and going to vote on it in two weeks and move it. It means referring it back to the Planning Commission. So it'll come back to us after the Planning Commission gets through it. Excuse me, I didn't mean, I just want to be sure everybody understands what we're moving...
Can I ask a question concerning that comment then? So this would go to the Planning Commission and then we would have the three council meeting process since it's a change of an ordinance that people could come down and respond to at that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I think Larry brings up a good point, which is that we're assuming that this is a compromise without having any idea what the five Board of Adjustment members think of it. I mean, what if they're completely opposed to issuing permits for chickens? Then it doesn't represent a compromise at all. And so I think, you know, Sam's is selling chicken chalais now. I mean, this is so commonplace in our city, no matter how many acres it is. It's throughout the city. It always has been here. It always will be here. It's being sold on a retail basis at Sam's on a large scale. I mean, I think it, I think that it probably would be appropriate for a vote of the people, either through, this council puts it on an election that's already set, or those who have worked so hard just think about doing an initiative petition and just putting it for a vote of the people. I think that this is cumbersome. It's either, I mean, I want to, I don't want to imply that I think this is ideal. I think ideal is to do something citywide or don't do it. I mean, I understand this is a compromise, but we don't know what the Board of Adjustment is going to think about it. And so it may not result in any permits being issued. I think that some considerations should be given to allowing a vote of the people on the issue.
Pete?
This is it. I'll be quiet. The Board of Adjustment, as Councilman McAtee pointed out, is a quasi-judicial body. No more than the state legislature can go to a judge and say, if we pass this law, are you going to hold it to be constitutional? Are you going to uphold this law? Are you going to overrule this law? But no more than the legislature can do that, can we go to the Board of Adjustment, ask them to predetermine what their disposition is with regard to this? They said as judges. And as judges, they're supposed to follow the law. Now, we all know that following the law varies with political persuasion many times, but that's a chance you have to take. I just, I, it's not a perfect solution, but it's, to me, it's a step in the right direction. And that's why I'm an advocate.
All right. Ready to vote? All right, we have a motion and a second to move this forward, send it to the Planning... Cast your votes. And it passes eight to one. Item 8B is a resolution approving travel expenses for council members to attend the Waste Management Annual Executive Sustainability Forum. Is there a motion?
How much is that going to cost, Your Honor?
I have no idea.
Well, I think it's important that we begin to focus in on what these attendance at these conferences costs. I mean, I, I was a part of the municipal league, National League of Cities, and a committee there in the three or four years I was associated, but nothing good happened. All they did was try to find more ways to get money from the federal government. And I don't think we need any help in that area. But I'd like to see a resolution brought forward to identify the causes, the particular things people are trying to learn, and how much it costs before we improve the process.
I am 110% in agreement with Pat. I don't know what that means.
Since you're coming down.
But I am absolutely in agreement that costs should be identified. I don't, this doesn't say how many people are going. What is, what is the agenda for this sustainability forum put on by a private corporation? What is, what is the goal? I mean, what are we, what is the agenda like? And who's going? I'm asking.
Well, we, staff didn't put this on. I mean, this is generated by council, so I don't know exactly. I understand it's a company that's putting this on for training. There's no cost to be in the seminar, obviously, travel costs. The trip down to Phoenix costs, you know, I don't know, three, four, $500. A hotel room's probably a couple hundred dollars a night.
Let me just, let me...
I've looked at the agenda because I was very interested. They do have outside speakers talking about the future of sustainable waste management, both from a commercial standpoint as well as, say, a residential type of waste management standpoint. So those are issues that the city really needs to begin looking at, not just for today, but 20, 40, 100 years from now. How are we addressing, how are we addressing waste management? And this is a company that certainly knows a lot about it, so why not listen to what they have from experts, both within this company and then outside experts?
Well, here's a reason, David, is that this company in particular, and certainly other corporations, have come under public scrutiny for putting together these kind of junkets, which oftentimes involve whining and dining and entertaining legislators. There's a New York Times article recently, they've come under scrutiny in both Arizona and California, this particular corporation. I agree that there is need to look at sustainability and different waste management options, but we have an Office of Sustainability. There are lots of national conferences on this type of, and waste management. This particular corporation is at those conferences. I mean, I've been to some of those conferences and I've seen them, but not just waste management. Many companies are there. They all have booths. You can go through the exhibit halls. You can talk to all the different companies, not just one. I'm not, I'm not understanding why taxpayers would pay to send council members to a sustainability forum, which the flyer that was sent to us says just happens to coincide with the Phoenix Open. Is that a golf tournament? Is, I mean, Kenny, I'm asking you for some guidance. If you have a private corporation, taxpayers are paying to send us on the horseshoe to this private corporation's retreat, and then the private corporation is taking council members to giving tickets to a golf tournament, or putting them in a suite, or whining and dining them, or...
Councilman, I don't think there's any, there's been any efforts along those lines. I think you're making things up.
I'm asking a theoretical question, not necessarily just for this.
Then you need to clarify that it is a theoretical question.
Let me ask you a theoretical question, Kenny. If a private corporation asks that we come to a sustainability, annual executive sustainability forum, and part of what goes on during those three days is things that have a monetary value, like tickets to a U.S. Phoenix Open or something like that, is there any potential problem there?
You have to have a specific set of facts to be able to evaluate whether or not there's actually a problem or not a problem. Is there a potential problem? Possibly there's a potential problem if the sponsor who's giving away the free gifts with monetary value is also a city contractor, but you just, you can't really answer it in the abstract. You have to have a specific set of facts to look at.
Okay, well, this is...
So, I mean, perhaps it's advertised as part of the, what's going to take place during the seminar, and you have to pay a fee to get into the seminar. So there's a fee paid upfront.
No, this is, they're saying it's free. That's part of how that they, that some of the scrutiny is that they say it's free. I'm here and then we'll...
But it's pure speculation that anybody that might attend this seminar would even take advantage of those things. So I mean, it's...
But this is, this is a corporation that operates landfills within Oklahoma City, correct?
I think so.
Yes. Okay. Well, I, let's, now, let's look at the facts. It's a one-day conference. When I was looking at attending this, which I'm not, I was going to fly that morning and return that evening. It's a one-day conference. It's not a three-day golf excursion. It's a one-day conference. And Jim, do you have a copy of that? It's right here. Let's look at this, just to quit, just to limit your ability to start throwing out suspicions on every type of activity. It's a, looking at the, well, this one doesn't go into the details, but it's the various workshops on sustainability with respect to waste management. You know, you've really gone beyond just bringing up theoretical questions. You've, in a sense, have inferred that somebody is going to get some kind of monetary benefit out of attending a forum that's really designed to better educate members of this council. I think that there are forums that can educate members of the council that are not put on by private corporations, a corporation which has come under public scrutiny for these kind of junkets. That's...
This is, again, this is not a junket. It's a one-day seminar. And you can go out there that morning, return that evening, not spend any time, not even spending the night.
Well, I question what the value of the city is. If we are looking at a problem that we don't have for 20, or 40, or 100 years, use your numbers, we're wasting our time. We ought to be focused on the problems we can deal with today. And I've talked to the city manager about waste management several times, and we've talked about some alternative to landfills. And the answer I got was, we won't have a problem for the next 10, or 15, or 20 years. We've got landfill capability to deal with that. Ultimately, it's going to be a problem. But I think at the time it becomes a problem, or we foresee it as a problem, we ought to begin to investigate alternatives at that point.
Actually, we are doing a landfill evaluation report that the Environmental Assistant Trust has been working on to take a look at the landfills and long-term solutions on it.
Larry?
Yeah, I hate to chase a rabbit, but I think I've got to, just a minute. Let me preface my comments. I am not going and have no interest in going to the Phoenix trip, so my comments have nothing to do with that particular trip. But Councilman Ryan raised an interesting point, and I need some direction from you all on the council about this. Several years ago, when I first came on council, I was encouraged, as every member of the council was encouraged, to participate in the National League of Cities. The National League of Cities happens to espouse a political agenda and an economic agenda and a solutions agenda that's different than my personal agenda, and Pete can attest to that. I got involved and I was their token conservative on the Human Development Committee. And the first meeting I went to, I used the word "character is important in determining what a position should entail." And I was almost torn, feathered out of the room. After being involved in that committee for a number of years, I was chosen the chairman of that committee. And was the chairman of that committee when we had a budget constraint operation here, and we were told we could not travel, and so I had to get out of that and not participate anymore. The emphasis has changed, and I have been selected as a councilman. John has also been selected on the committee. He's selected to the Human Development Committee. I've been selected for the committee that you're talking about, Pat, there. And everybody here knows that I do not believe in debt. I wrote a book, Rebuilding Your Financial Wall God's Way, which says everybody should get out of debt. But I was selected beyond that committee. My voice will be heard. Debt is wrong. We should reduce the debt. Should the citizens of Oklahoma City pay for myself to go to Washington, D.C. once a year, and to go to another location once a year, and a committee meeting twice a year, for me to stand up and say, I think there's a better way to run our city's finances than going into the trough and looking for more money? And I'll defer to you all to do that. Tell me whether I should go or not to go without any, you know, because if I go, you know what's at stake. And will it change? Probably not. Will I, will I change my views? I know not. So you tell me what you want me to do. I'm in a quandary. Thank you for your time, Your Honor.
All right. Who else wants to speak on this issue?
May I just make a brief comment? I am also not going to Phoenix and didn't intend to, but Bill McDonough, who is the keynote speaker there, happens to be a personal friend of mine from years ago in New York, and is the leading expert on green architecture. He built the first green Walmart in the country, I believe, and is internationally renowned expert on sustainability. And so just in terms of the quality of the people that they are bringing in to speak, I think they probably are top-notch.
Okay.
My only concern is we lost our focus on this conversation. Pat's comment was, we ought to talk about what it costs. We ought to know what it costs and what the mission is. That's different than arguing about each individual thing. I want to speak in support of Pat's idea, which he raised earlier a long time ago, that when we approve these, we approve the purpose, as Larry well set out, the purpose of the meeting he's going to. But I don't think there's anything wrong with knowing what it costs. I just, I don't see why we, we know what everything else costs. I mean, we vote, dollars drive a lot of decisions that we make. And I don't think there's anything wrong with just attaching something that would say, the mission is this, and this is what it costs. And I would, I think that would solve a lot of problems because you would start to evaluate things based on what it actually costs the public to do it.
What is the, what is the reason why the costs aren't on there? Is there a reason? I've never heard anybody say why.
We've just historically never done.
Okay.
Well, you'd have to know how many people are going. So I guess I'd ask again, who's going?
There's a little bit of logistical issue too, just because of the fact that we, unless we've got authorization to go, we don't normally get the airplane tickets and hotel rooms and that kind of stuff. So we don't know which hotel we're staying at, the cost of, because we don't know where they're going and whether there's still rooms available and, but there's, you know, there's ballpark. Quite frankly, the hotel rooms, it's more number of nights. I mean, travel doesn't vary that much, nor does hotel room vary that much.
I mean, I don't think we need an exact number, but just a, you know, ballpark.
Not to exceed.
Yeah.
A not-to-exceed number would be easy to check.
This is all very interesting, but it doesn't change the resolution that's on the agenda today.
Can I just ask who's going?
Mr. May, if I may, when I first was elected, it was like, hey, you need to get involved. You need to learn more about the city and about how we do things. And of course, Waste Management, they do operate landfill in Ward seven. I am not a huge fan of landfills because if you look at landfills in our city, the majority of the landfills in our city are in poor and/or minority communities. So I have an interest to see what Waste Management has to say about sustainability. How are they going to ensure clean air where poor people and minorities won't be able to smell trash? I want to hear... I, 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 I want to hear those things. So, I think it's important to me, as a person who has a landfill, uh, in, in, in his world that is operated by Waste Management, to hear, uh, some of those things from, uh, the, the national folks. Now, is this a junket to me? No. Uh, like I said, that we, as a city, we have some environmental justice, uh, issues as relates to landfills. Uh, so, like I said, I, my intentions of going is to strictly learn about sustainability and what do they plan on doing for us clean, uh, landfills.
All right. Ready to vote?
Can I ask who is going on this trip for the third time?
Well, if, if the resolution passes, any of you would be able to go, the way I read it.
Can I ask whose intent it is, is it to go on this trip?
I don't know that it's appropriate for you to start asking questions of the rest of the council. You've made your comments. I think we ought to have a motion and go.
Is there a timing issue that we might be able to defer this, uh, so that we can bring the cost back? Or is it next, is it?
Just next week.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion, one way or the other?
I, I move the item for acceptance.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. This is on item 10B, and item 10B passes six to three. Item 10C is the resolution approving travel expenses for the mayor and/or council to attend the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, D.C. It's like, I don't think we want to repeat the same discussion all over again. Please don't make us go through that again.
Is this the same situation? Is the timing, is the timing such that we can't change it?
I, I appreciate your comments of not questioning the council, but I've already said that if the council approves this, I am going, so that's-
I understand. All right. Is, is-
My estimated cost, including, including fees for, for the conference and motel, I would guess is $4,000.
Okay. All right. Is that a motion, Larry, to approve it?
I'd like to let somebody else approve it, since I have a vested interest supposedly in this.
I'll move for approval.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second. Cast your votes, and it passes eight to one. All right. On to, um, I guess we'll continue with the council comments. Pat?
I'm ready.
All right. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also Councilman, uh, Shadid, for, uh, being involved in the Martin Luther King, uh, events, uh, this past, uh, weekend. And I also would like to thank the Martin Luther King Coalition, also city staff, uh, for, uh, great coordination of, of the, um, events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Meg?
Yeah, I just would like to ask you to pass on to Chief City and his staff, um, my appreciation. I've attended a couple of, um, evening meetings in the last seven or eight days, and his staff has been absolutely outstanding in providing information to neighborhoods and what they need to do. So, if you would just extend my, my thanks to the police department, I really appreciate it.
All right. David?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Oklahoma City Community College on the opening of their new Performing Arts Center. Uh, it's, it holds a little over a thousand, uh, people, and, uh, in some ways, I'm sorry to say this, uh, I think it's even more impressive than our civic center. So, it's a great addition to South Oklahoma City, uh, and I wish them all the luck with their new facility. Secondly, I would like to see if our staff could readdress an issue that came up the past year or so as it relates to notification on changes in zoning, more so in the rural areas. Uh, I think our current, well, inside the, uh, urban area, we have a requirement of notifying everybody within 300 feet of the proposed changed area, and in the rural settings, we expand that up to a quarter of a mile to notify at least 10 people that may be impacted by that change of notice. I'm just asking for the staff to evaluate that, to see if that number should increase, say, from reaching at least 10 people to, say, reach at least 20 or 25. What's the best number? And if we do expand it to 20 or 25, should we expand the potential area of notification from a quarter mile to where, you know, if we have to go up to a half a mile, even a full mile, to reach that 20 or 25, if they could look at that? And then bring back some type of recommendations. And Pete, if you have any input, or Larry, I know you have some rural area, uh, John has rural areas.
I would be in agreement, uh, to doing something like that, because I have, for example, a, um, a, a case right now, uh, that the planning commissioner is getting ready to hear, where it's in kind of the rural area, um, but it does have, I think, a negative impact upon the surrounding, uh, area, but, again, it goes back to the notification, um, where people didn't know, and I think they, they should have the right to know what's going on.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Pete?
Well, my, my experience with that has been that the expansion from 300 feet, period, to a quarter of a mile, at least 10, has worked very well in, in the cases that I've dealt with, because it's worked very well. It's a much better, uh, it's just a much more transparent way of doing it than we've done it before, and it hasn't really created any problems. In fact, I think it's been helpful in my, in the cases I've had since then, but, but there's no, no reason not to look at it. I mean, if it, if it would be more helpful to do it differently, but it's been-
Right. There's not a right or wrong answer to this. This is a policy issue. The councils would go forward. Councilman White came up with the rationale that we're using right now, and whatever we set the, the, the limits at, there's always going to be one person that just sits right outside. It's all, no matter, you know, you're just, it's, but, you know, obviously, there's, you know, if you-
Once you get into the rural area, when you start, uh, making your protest area much wider than a quarter of a mile, you're letting people that are quite a distance from the property have a lot, have a pretty big say in something that, so, but I'm, you know, from my standpoint, I'd, if they have some information that says different, I'd be glad to, I'm, I'm not-
I was just going to add that there's not a limit on it. It, it's until you get 10 names, so it could go out farther than a quarter of a mile.
Okay. Right.
All right. Larry?
I have one other thing.
Okay.
One other thing. I want, I want to talk about the Eastern Flyer situation with, uh, the ODOT and Tulsa and, um, has, um, the last time you and I, Jim, you and I talked, there was going to be a meeting with ODOT where we'd know more about it. Has that meeting happened yet?
It has not happened yet. We hope it will happen this week.
Okay. Well, you know, the, the closing, for the bid closing on this thing, is set to the end of the month, and if, and the Tulsa, uh, council is ready to do, in fact, they may have approved a resolution, which they would very much like for us to join that resolution, to join resolution. And it's, it's, um, we might not be able to, to use the exact language. I think I've seen some language submitted, but our experience with ODOT has not been quite what Tulsa's has been. They're very concerned that ODOT is not level with, with regard to some of the things they've been told about, how, how far into Tulsa, uh, the tracks could be utilized, and so there's some other things that are not part of the Oklahoma City piece of it. I mean, our, our, our position is really much simpler, is we just hate to see that track go away, which is the link that, that would in fact go away between Oklahoma City and Tulsa.
We can get a resolution after the 28th, if you'd like, before the end of the month, accommodate that. That day's 21st. The language is something we can work on.
Well, if you would find out what Tulsa's language was, they were supposed to approve it. I don't know when their council meeting is, but they were supposed to approve it. And if we can approve the same one they did, it'd be nice. I mean, obviously, that would be solidarity.
There's a lot of stories going on on this. I've not done enough research to realize that everybody's not saying the same thing on it. I was told that, that just this morning, that, uh, uh, the process will allow passenger rail to be on that line, but, but again, that, I've got to get to the-
Well, I don't think there's any question about that. It could, but the question is, when it's, when you start running all those oil tankers out of Cushing, are there, is there going to be space? Is there going to be time? Is there going to be the availability? Um, and in a passenger line, it's going to want to stop at some of these small towns if it, and, uh, BNSF has indicated, and I think this is a fact, they have indicated they're not interested in that local freight thing. That's why that little company that owns that line, or leases that line right now, that's why they're successful, is because they serve Chandler and Stroud and Bristow, all those little towns that, that are not being served by rail freight now, and, uh, and BNSF wants to bring everything to a big terminal. They're a big company, and they've got the right to have their own business plan, but, but it's a different business plan, and I think that's a fact. Um, I'd just like to see us go on record that, because we can't afford, I, in my opinion, we can't afford to lose the rail bed. I mean, think, we, when you think about losing the right-of-way, you know, some of the places where, in Oklahoma City, where we have claimed the right-of-way, we didn't put a train on it, but we put some of the best trails that we have in Oklahoma City are on those old right-ways, and I just, um, the one story I know that you're, that you're referring to when you're talking about not getting the straight story, the first story I heard was it included the line to Midwest City and Tinker, and I found out later that's not true, but, so there is some, some misunderstanding about it, but I, in, in the most charitable way possible, I would like to urge ODOT not to do it, you know, and, or at least take our interest into consideration, because we're, we're right at the verge of a, of really making a major move with regard to light rail transportation between Edmond and Midwest City and Norman. We're just very close to being able to do that, and I would hate for anything to happen that would accommodate that, or not accommodate that. And then the idea from coming in from Tulsa is just, that's just a bonus, so, anyway.
I have to agree with Councilman White.
Larry?
Dear, I'd like to thank the folks at Windsor Forest for the hospitality. Shelly, Jolene, and I, the other night at their meeting, it was very good, and, um, and I'd like to also make, uh, thank the West Oklahoma City Rotary Club for inviting me to speak at their meeting last week. And at that meeting, uh, I was prompted to use as an analogy the fact that General Electric just chose Oklahoma City as the site for their International Research Center for Energy, and that gives us the ability to shine a light on Oklahoma City. And I've thought about that. Uh, the thunder has shined a light on Oklahoma City, and another thing that maybe we've forgotten, uh, that I hope to bring out, and I appreciate you all supporting, John and I going, among others, to the National League of Cities, we have a light going in Oklahoma City of being an extremely well-managed fiscal, and we have our folks down here, Craig and, and Jim's leadership. Uh, we have an excellent bond rating, even though I don't like bonds, we have an excellent bond rating. We have a light to shine, and hopefully, by being up there, John and I, in his committee and my committee, can shine a light and encourage, uh, some of the other cities around who are struggling, especially with the money problems, uh, to maybe look at another option, and that is the option of pay as you go and run your, uh, run your operation on a very thrifty and conservative basis and count the cost. Will it change the world, Pat? Probably not, but I, uh, hopefully, we can shine some light, and I think that's part of our responsibility to shine the blessings that have given us to these other folks and maybe give them some hope. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed? Two things. I'd like to see Pat's resolution coalesce into something and move forward. I don't, you use the word "not appropriate" to ask the council who's going. I don't understand where, why you're using that word. I don't understand-
It's a, it's a, it feels like a condescending style that you used.
Okay. Well, I, I can try and change the verbiage or the tone, but I think it's reasonable to know who's going. It's nine days away.
I, I'm not saying it's unreasonable. I'm just saying, asking the council-
But that's not what you said. You said it's inappropriate to ask the council who's going, and, and you didn't, you didn't talk about condescension, or, you're saying it's, what I heard was, it's inappropriate to ask council, and, and I don't understand that. It's nine days away. To understand the costs, I mean, nobody has a problem saying who is and isn't going to the National League of Cities, right? But, and I, I don't understand if this is, if this isn't why anybody would have a problem saying they are not going to Waste Management nine days from now, so that we can better understand the costs and the, and the goals. Um, and so I would hope that this would coalesce into, that this particular company has been aggressive in some of its courting of legislators, not in, this in Oklahoma City, across the country, um, taking, you know, football games or golfing events or, and, and so I, I do think that, um, I do think that it deserves scrutiny. Second thing is that, that I would-
Good question. Are we going to give the same scrutiny to Republic Services? I mean, if we're going to attack one landfill, we might as well say the, the other one.
Yeah. Just so I can be clear, John, for me, the distinction between something like National League of Cities or, you know, conferences, like sustainability conferences that have lots of companies represented, is that this is one particular corporation. I absolutely would extend the same scrutiny to any one particular corporation that was inviting people to football games or go, taking them to golf tournaments in Phoenix or, or anything of that sort that's been in the New York Times, that's, that's, that's received that kind of scrutiny in Arizona and California. Absolutely, it wouldn't matter what corporation it is. So, that's that. Second thing is that I would invite, um, those to a town hall meeting this Thursday night. It's at the Bricktown Hotel and Convention Center. It's Heywood Sanders from the University of Texas in San Antonio on the Convention Center and the Convention Center Hotel project here in Oklahoma City. He is Harvard-educated. His bibliography is nine pages long of publications, books, chapters, national meetings he's presented at on the Convention Center, um, industry. It doesn't mean that he is for against anything. It means that he's testified in front of Congress twice. He's talked to city councilors throughout the country in city after city after city, and there's no reason that any city would have to take on a project, especially one of its most expensive investments, in a vacuum. It's, it's, I think, very helpful to understand what is and isn't happened in, in other cities, what has been high-risk or lower risk, what we can learn from other cities. And I think no one is really better suited than Mr. Sanders to provide that kind of holistic, um, accounting of what's happening in other cities. He has what may be the definitive book coming out in April, 500 pages, on what's happened in city after city after city, um, and I think it will be, uh, very informative. Again, it's at 6:30. It's at the Bricktown Hotel and Convention Center on MLK and Reno. You may recognize that as the address where we, we put the new Greyhound bus terminal. It's right across the street from that. He has, again, spoken with countless city councilors in cities across America. He has, he'll be here for two days, from Thursday morning to Saturday morning. He's just staying downtown, and he's, um, he's willing to meet with any media, with any councilors individually. I know two city councilors have already, um, are, are already going to meet with him individually. I mean, I, I just invite the rest of the council. Boyd has his schedule, and he's willing to meet with anyone individually, um, as well as, as any media. Um, I think that, um, we, we've had successes and we've had failures in terms of, of downtown development projects. We've had some great successes with maps. We've had some other things, like the, the Downtown Galleria, where there were changing market realities throughout the country, and maybe we didn't pay enough attention to what was happening in other cities around the country, and it, and it impacted the success of some of those dreams and, and plans. And I, I would hope that we would look holistically at what's happening in other cities as, as we move forward, and he's particularly well-suited. Um, again, that's 6:30, 75 minutes, and I think it'll be extremely educational, and I'd, I'd be grateful for everyone, anyone's attendance. Thanks.
Ed, if I could just ask a question? We've had a lot of conversation about expenses today. Who's paying for his expenses and his hotel room and renting the facility and all?
Thanks. I, I am, just as I've paid for each speaker, the mayor of Milwaukee, the Jarrett Walker, I pay for him, but, but no city tax dollars are paid whatsoever. I pay for the audiovisual. I pay for renting the room. I pay for his hotel. I pay for, um, his food. Everything comes out of my, my personal, sure.
James?
Uh.
City manager reports.
Uh, we've got Craig Freeman and Bob Ponkill here, just wanting to talk a little bit about the first city manager report about the revenue enhancement programs that we're going forward with. Craig?
Thank you. I just want to take a few minutes to talk about our revenue enforcement program that we have in our city treasurer's office. Bob Ponkill is our city treasurer and has responsibility for this program and leads this. Davis, per year, is one of our assistant city treasurers, and Davis is directly responsible for the program. Um, the, the program focuses really on enforcement and support. The tax commission has responsibility for the collection of our sales and use tax. the collection of our sales and use tax, this program focuses on compliance activities and reviews to ensure that we're getting all the tax that is due to the city, I mean, it actually grew out of a city sales tax audit that was conducted back in 2001, city auditor's office conducted an audit and looked at some of the data they were receiving from the Tax Commission, came up methodologies, identified areas where we weren't getting all the tax that was due to the city, and made recommendations for enhancing or developing a program to be able to ensure that we get all the sales tax that is due to us, and so ultimately, that ended up in the city treasurer's office, and they've taken leadership on that, Bob's gonna present more of the information within the report here in just a second, and talk about some of the efforts that have been going on, working with the Tax Commission, because Bob's really played a leadership role in that, and has really served the city well, as well as the state, and, so we'll talk about that just a little bit, I did wanna give, basically, the Tax Commission, you know, they, they focus on many different revenues that are collected within the state, and sales tax is one of those revenues, and even within sales tax, there are over 500 cities they're collecting sales tax for, there's 76 counties they're collecting sales tax for, their, their focus is, has been enhanced and increased recently, but it's primarily on, on delinquencies, on compliance, where a vendor is not paying their sales tax, our review goes further than that by looking at boundaries, where ensuring that tax, that taxes are being remitted to the right location, looking at allocations of taxes, looking at compliance where there may be some variations within vendors, and so there's a lot of more, a lot more data review that we do individually within our own tax, so it supports the work of the Tax Commission, they still have the primary responsibility, but it's an important program for the city, and the, the report itself talks about the results that we've seen from our, from our program, and what we do see in the enhancements in our revenues, I did wanna give just a couple of examples within the last year that we've seen, that there was one that our, one of our revenue auditors found, within the revenue enforcement program, is there, in their reviews, there was a major retailer who had, in their, that had a missing payment in one of, a missing estimated payment in one of their remittances, our auditor identified that, that ended up resulting in about $600,000 that otherwise the city wouldn't have received, just because it was a missing payment that was there, there wasn't another way that would have been identified, we had another major retailer that, when they filed their taxes, they filed them properly, but, they filed the amount properly, but the allocation on their filing was, was, there was an error in that, it was incorrect, and again, our revenue auditor identified that, it resulted in about $750,000 that, when it was correctly allocated, came back to the city, and again, it's revenue that, that wouldn't, we would not have received had someone not found that in an audit or in another way, and so our, our revenue auditors are reviewing this on an ongoing basis and identified those, there was another issue with the Tax Commission had actually implemented a new system, there was a system error that occurred about a year ago, our auditor looked at it real quickly and identified that there was an error in what was being allocated to the cities, and that was corrected immediately, and, and generally, when we look at these, the Tax Commission is very responsive and works with us, but some of these could have been identified through an audit or other means, but many of these, there's really not an indication they would have been identified had it not been for the efforts in our revenue enforcement program, so I'd like to ask Bob to come and speak, just for a few minutes, about the efforts that he's been leading and working in with the liaison board that was developed by OML, to work with the Tax Commission and get enhanced enforcement from the Tax Commission, and then also talk a little bit more about the specifics within our program.
Good morning, continuing on with Craig's discussion, an indirect, I guess, activity is, that I participate in, is a subcommittee of the Oklahoma Municipal League, this subcommittee was organized about, in 2010, and it was primarily organized as a result of concerns that were being expressed by cities across the state about the service level that was being received from the Oklahoma Tax Commission, the, the committee is often referred to as the liaison board, in addition to looking at the service level issues, we were also asked to look at other areas, such as the standard contract with the Tax Commission, you know, audits that they were performing, the type of reporting that cities were getting to know what, you know, to be able, be aware of their, their tax collections. One key project within the last couple of years was a review of the service cost that, of the, basically, of the costs that the Tax Commission provides to cities and towns, in short, that what the study showed us is that we're overpaying on what we pay the Tax Commission for these services, as a result, there's been some legislation that's been introduced, and it's currently pending in this coming session, that, should that legislation pass, it will reduce, it should reduce the city's administrative fees by about $2 million a year. Another area that the Tax Commission, is relatively new program with the Tax Commission, is called, called the Business Closure Program, this kinda came about, I think, partly because it was griping about, you know, you need to do more enforcement, you need to do more with delinquencies, that sort of thing, but I think it also came about because they did implement a new system, they did have a few more capabilities, the legislation, in short, says that if a taxpayer is delinquent for three periods within any 24-month period, then their business is subject to closure, the Tax Commission's been using that program for a little over a year now, and based on the last report that I received from them back, I think it was in November, the program in, in its first year had achieved $15.5 million of tax, delinquent tax recoveries last year, now that's for states, cities, and counties, so obviously, a pretty successful program. The good thing about the Business Closure Program is there really haven't been that many businesses that they've actually had to close, just the fact that, that awareness is out there gives these taxpayers the incentive to resolve their delinquency, so it's, it's, overall, it's been a pretty good program. Now, what I'd like to do is just briefly go over the efforts that we have going on with, within the city treasurer's office, it's covered in, in the report that you have in front of you, one of the first efforts that, that we do, that Craig mentioned, came about as a result of an audit back in 2001, is we will review the information, the data that we're getting from the Tax Commission every month, and what we're doing is, we're looking at that data for some of what Craig had described, you know, we're looking for anomalies, we're looking for missing payments, we're looking for fluctuating payments, we're looking for different trends in different business industries, and when we identify problems, but we fill our errors, we then contact the Tax Commission, we work with them to get those errors resolved. Another area that I think I talked with you guys about, maybe a little over a year ago, is the independent audit program, what this allows us to do is to, we can hire an outside auditor to go in and do sales tax audits on our behalf, now, this doesn't relieve the Tax Commission of their responsibility to still form the same amount of audits that they always have for the city, what this does is it allows us to target what we know are problematic areas, areas with certain taxpayers that are unique to Oklahoma City, as Craig mentioned, the Tax Commission's auditing for over 500 cities, so this allows us to target those taxpayers that are having problems within the city, we can have an audit performed, if there are problems with non-compliance, we can work with those taxpayers, and we can get those problems resolved quickly, it basically is a benefit to the city certainly, but also to the taxpayers, because it keeps those small problems from becoming big problems, large monetary problems later on. Another area that we look at, and you all are familiar, that we have some areas in Oklahoma City where we have overlapping zip codes, and this tends to cause confusion with, you know, within a Tax Commission, with taxpayers, in that when they apply for a sales tax permit, or, say, the Tax Commission is having to reclassify them and issuing a new permit for them, the tendency is to misclassify those taxpayers to the wrong jurisdiction, say, taxpayer up in the 703013 zip code, which overlaps with Edmond, may be coded to Edmond rather than Oklahoma City, when they're actually in Oklahoma City. What we do is, about twice a year, we'll go in and look at those boundary areas, we'll identify those problems, and again, we'll get back with the Tax Commission, and we'll have those errors corrected. Most of you also know that we do collect the hotel tax for the city, this isn't the tax that is collected by the Tax Commission and then remitted back to us, we're actually responsible for collecting all the taxes from all the hotels within Oklahoma City, right now, there's a little over 160 hotels, now, what we do is, we will review the returns, we're, we're looking for, you know, delinquencies, we're looking for errors in calculations, we're also looking at their exemptions that they're asking for, that they're taking, and that tends to be our, probably, our biggest problem areas with the exemptions, the hotel operators tend to assume that if a customer is exempt from state sales tax, and they're also exempt from hotel, the city's hotel tax, and that's not necessarily the case, so again, we'll review those returns, we'll work with the, with the taxpayers, we'll send them correction notices, and we'll get the appropriate amount of tax paid. One project that I spoke with you all about, about a year and a half ago, is one that we refer to as our collection letter process, we're issuing collection letters, and then, if we fail to collect that delinquent tax, we can take those taxpayers to municipal court. We were basing that program off of a report that we had received from the Tax Commission that showed we had a large amount of taxes that were due, that were outstanding, to Oklahoma City, now, since we've undertaken the program and analyzed that report pretty thoroughly that we got from the Tax Commission, we came to realize that a lot of the amounts that are on that report are some that we can't pursue for collection, we're gonna have to let the Tax Commission do this for us, there was a significant amount of taxpayers on that report that basically have gone out of business, I mean, the report dated back 30 years, the first report we got, so a lot of those companies gone out of business, there are certain taxpayers that are in some form of legal proceedings, that their assessments are, you know, their taxes are a part of that, there are taxpayers that are currently, their taxes are under protest with the Tax Commission, they're working their way through the tax court process, and then there's those, there's those taxpayers that are in the Tax Commission's collection process, you know, liens have been filed on our property and that sort of thing, so there's not that many left over for us to pursue, however, we are working with the Tax Commission on other delinquencies that we might, may be able to use this program for in the near future. Now, one effort that we have that we're just now starting is a brand-new effort, it's, what we're doing is, we're comparing the city's licensing system to our delinquent tax records, now, what happens is, say, if you're a license or a business that's coming in to renew your license for this year, what happens now is that the licensing system will bounce off of our delinquent report, and if you're delinquent on your taxes, your business license renewal will be denied until you contact us, so that we can work with you to get that delinquency resolved, and then get you your business license, so that's a, a brand-new program that we're just starting. Now, the report in front of you, just in closing, reflects that we've achieved about $1.1 million in additional recoveries as, as a result of these efforts this year, and that's right on target with our, with our target for the year of $2.2 million, program's been successful, it's been going on for about 12 years now, as Craig had mentioned, Davis is a key piece of this, is he oversees the program for us, but we'll continue to look at other major revenues within a city to see if there may be others that may benefit from additional enforcement activities, that's all I have, and I certainly can take some questions if you have any.
Yeah, Pat?
Your honor, just a quick question, how about use tax?
Use tax, we, we do the same reviews for use tax that we do the sales tax, we're monitoring that on a monthly basis, same, same process, we contact the Tax Commission if we, if we determine that there are any kind of errors, however, the problem with use tax is it fluctuates pretty dramatically from month to month, it just depends on, you know, that particular taxpayer, you know, and the activities that they have going on within a given month, so it's a bit more difficult to, to determine whether or not there's been a specific error.
Because I've talked to some people who don't, don't know we have a use tax, don't know where it comes from, would a public information program help?
Actually, the states had one in, in the past, they used to have ads on at the time, and I assume they will again this year, remember the elephant in the room commercials that they had, that the state would run about, you know, you bought your TV set online, and you really need to pay it and file on the, on the, on the, your income tax this year, and there was a elephant in the room that, that people were ignoring, so that was-
Has the city made a comparable effort?
Well, we haven't done any, any TV ads, but we have put notices out before.
Like fringes and water bills?
Yeah, we have, we can do that again.
And there's actually a link on the city's website to a presentation that I had done last year about use tax and what it covers, and why it's due, and how you pay it.
Any other questions for Bob? All right, thank you both.
Mayor, Mr. Mackey pointed out about, about our fiscal leadership, and the three, four guys sitting on the, on the front row really did a good job, and they're known around the state, and so when there's state groups that are brought in to talk about dealing with the Tax Commission or Oklahoma Municipal League, they always call one of these gentlemen or other, other staff with the city to be involved in that, because we do kinda set the standard for the state in this area, so, excellent, excellent team members.
All right.
We also have the January sales and use tax on the agenda this morning, a little bit sluggish, The Economist has pointed out that the second half of the fiscal year, matter of fact, he's pointed this out for quite some time, and still believes that it will be more robust than the first part of the, of the fiscal year, and we hope he's right as we go forward.
Does the current report reflect Christmas sales?
Partially, and of course, Christmas sales were unique this year, there were one less weekend between Thanksgiving and, and Christmas, two of them were affected by weather, so it may, it may not be totally recoverable.
All right, we have executive session, we'll be back.